Okay, I would call the regular scheduled city council meeting of February 18th. If you would all please rise. Chief P C F, Chief B D C, and the board of commissioners.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which stands our nation, our government, and its people.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilor, you can give your member a report.
Sure.
Councilor, you can see your member Taylor.
Here.
Councilor, you can see your member Warren.
Here.
Mayor, for the time by Chairperson Dan.
Here.
And Mayor Chairman Chopper.
Here. Okay, we're gonna have a presentation from the Orange County Department. You ready, Chris?
It's been pulled.
Okay, will I show up with the notes in there?
Next slide.
I consent, Cal, to all items to be taken. This is my motion. Have anybody asked to have anything pulled in staff, in public, anybody?
Mr. Mayor, we don't have any.
Okay, then nobody wants to talk about the items, right?
Not that I'm aware of, no sir.
Motion. Okay, vote, vote please.
Okay, the motion by Mayor President Mayor Dan, accepted by Councilor you can see your member Taylor, and Councilor you can see your member George.
Yes.
Councilor you can see your member David.
Yes.
Councilor you can see your member Warren.
Yes.
Mayor President Chairperson Dan.
Yeah.
And Mayor Chairman Chopper.
Okay, we're moving on to public hearings. Unfinished business. We're going to do item AA. This is the second reading of ordinance submitting California Public Employment System contract with the city of Stanton with the approval ordinance number 1129.
Mr. Mayor, that would be me. Good evening, our mayor and some council members. Before you move, we have this evening, we have the second reading for approval ordinance number 1129. This ordinance was introduced at the regular city council meeting of February 14th, 2023. The city council has asked to hold the second reading of ordinance number 1129 to amend the California Public Employment Contract System contract with City of Stanton. The recommended action this evening is that the book read ordinance number 1129 entitled, An Ordinance of the City Council of City of Stanton Authorizing an Amendment to the Contract Between the City Council of the City of Stanton and the Board of Administration of California Public Employee Retirement System to Remove the Contract Provision Excluding from Calpers' Membership Persons Compensated on an Hourly basis Respectively pursuant to government with Sections 20305 and 20533. And the city council is also recommended to adopt ordinance number 1129, a complete staff report, here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion to adopt ordinance 1129? All in motion. Second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Please vote.
Mayor, we have a motion by Councilmember George, accepted by Mayor President Dan, and Councilor George.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Mayor President Dan.
Yes.
And Mayor Chopper.
Thank you. Okay, unfinished business is 9A, which is just like a budget workshop. Is that you?
Good evening, honorable mayor members of the council. To ensure proper time and attention is allocated for the city's local workshop, staff is requesting the council consider a date for the fiscal year 2023-24 budget workshop, separate from an existing council meeting date. Staff is proposing either Tuesday, May 16th or Tuesday, May 30th as viable date. If neither of these times works, staff requests the council select an alternative date this evening. That concludes my staff report, and staff is ready to take direction.
Is there anybody responding to the possible dates? I have.
No, nobody answered. So I said, oops, you can all check your calendars at the dial and let us know which date is preferred.
Again, it's kind of hard for me.
You're the busy one, so you decide.
Get along with the thirty?
Yes, either the six.
Why do we have voices on the agenda? Okay, why don't we just go ahead and receive it, and we'll get the information better tomorrow when it's successful. All right, so we're going to give her, and I'm taking X.
Well, staff will wait in the direction of the council, they'll each demand their availability for each of those two days, and then we'll select everybody in the meantime.
Perfect. Is there a motion for that? Thank you, vote, vote.
Vote, favor.
Aye.
Any of those? Turn and answer.
All right, we're going to 9B. This is a resolution terminating the local emergency third by the city of Stanton resolving COVID-19. I should go on, P C.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As of February 28th, the governor ended California State of the Union presidency, and so the city decided to support the council to follow suit. There would be no continuing fiscal impact. The only change would be notifying the diners or the restaurants that have any COVID lockdown that the local emergency is happening. So this is a meeting of the council's consideration. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? I would like to make a recommendation that if we're going to do that, it would give them an opportunity to be notified, and we also give them a chance for a second notification and give them some time to make an adjustment in their business. What do you think, Spirit? Ninety days? They turned this up on to establish. What do you think?
Well, the various resolutions that the city already enacted during the emergency contemplated that after the meetings ended, they'd have two weeks to kind of close that. And so certainly this council could have a lot more time if they so desired.
I think it's a little easier to say something like that than to change your hours or your accommodations for your customers. I mean, to me, I think we did probably thirty days would be the max I could put with, unless somebody wants to do less. What do you guys think?
Is it set up for two weeks?
Fourteen days, that's correct.
How about we just do fourteen days?
Do we have any businesses right now actively doing outdoor dining on the sidewalk or parking area?
Everybody.
All of us, right?
Mayor, Mr. Chopper. So as a department, we were asked to address this some months ago, I think the vast majority of the outdoor dining has ceased to occur. There is, my understanding, I think, two establishments that they were encouraged to terminate their plans to our development services department to see if they could make their operation of a more permanent nature, but all of the temporary dining associated with the COVID type area is done.
Yeah, but we do have a lot of people that are outside, outdoor dining, that probably didn't, and those are the process with the city. There's a lot of people that do it that were probably unaware of, and a lot of it looks like they're doing it, but they shouldn't be doing it. So how do you think it would take, Tim?
I think fourteen days. We can do another review of the situation. The last time we did review it, there was only maybe one or two, but they indicated they wanted to go through the process to make whatever their situation was permanent. But the vast majority of the outdoor dining has been addressed to this point. And they were all given, no fines were issued, they were given a warning, and they're given instruction if they wanted to proceed down a route that would lead to permanent outdoor dining to contact development services.
Okay, you want to go with your motion, Mr.?
Yeah, I find the vote.
Okay, vote, vote.
A motion by Mayor President Dan, accepted by Councilmember Warren, and I'm proceeding with the vote, vote. Mayor George.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Mayor President Dan.
Yes.
And Mayor Chopper.
Yes. Okay, we're now on number ten. At this time, we'll have oral communications. Any member from the public may address this council, agency, housing authority, or any subject matter within our jurisdiction. Provided, no action will be taken on nonintended items. We'll allow you up to three minutes. And we have our first person, Kamu Kova, come on up, please.
Good evening. Yeah, you just have to get a little bit closer. Perfect. Thank you. My best of all, my nose. Good evening, honorable mayor of the city council. My name is Porsha Serpess. I'm the public affairs manager for SoCal Gas, and serving as the current liaison on behalf of Emily Grant, who's been promoted, and she's here getting our community outreach efforts for Angeles Link. So I will be your new public affairs representative at this time. So I'm here this evening, actually, to provide an update on the price of natural gas, which has been historically higher in recent months. And I want to share that market prices for natural gas continue to drop, driving a more than eighty percent decrease in March's bills as compared to January. Now, SoCal Gas did not set the price for natural gas. Instead, natural gas prices are determined by regional and national markets. Now, we buy in gas middle markets on behalf of residential and small business customers, and the cost of buying that gas is filled with no markup, meaning SoCal Gas does not profit from the movement of gas commodity prices. Now, recently, the California Public Utilities Commission approved the acceleration of the California Climate Credit, so customers should have received a credit of approximately fifty dollars either on their February or their March bill. SoCal Gas is also delaying collection activities on overdue residential accounts and will not disconnect overdue customers until further notice. We have also paused all non-residential collection build activities. We continue to inform and offer several ways to help income-qualified customers through our bill and home improvement assistance programs, bill forgiveness plans, and the level pay program. SoCal Gas recently announced ten million dollars in shareholder funding to provide additional relief to low-income families, seniors, and small restaurant owners impacted by the natural gas market crisis. Now, the ten million dollars, five million will go towards our gas assistance fund. This is a program administered by the United Way to provide one-time grants to income-qualified customers to help pay their natural gas bills, and this contribution will help the gas assistance fund essentially reach more customers with larger grants. Four million dollars will also go towards our, the relaunch, I should say, of fueling our communities. This is a collaborative program with local blue brains and nonprofit organizations to provide free meals and groceries to thousands of Californians facing food insecurities. And lastly, one million dollars will go towards our restaurant care resilience fund. This will target small restaurants to help with improvements, upgrade employee retentions, and rising costs. And for more information about any of these programs, customers can visit socalgas.com/newsroom. And lastly, we'd like to encourage our customers to continue to reduce their energy bills by doing a few simple tips, lowering the thermostat three to five degrees while permitting, wash clothes in cold water, reduce the temperature on the water heater to one hundred and twenty degrees, and limit the use of non-essential natural gas appliances such as fireplaces, spas, and pools. And so if you or a member of the community have any questions or concerns, please feel free to use me as a resource, and I will be more than happy to assist you or them directly. I think you're very kind this evening.
Any questions? Hi, Clarissa, if you would later copy that with us.
Absolutely. I'll be happy to email the city manager and city court for more information.
Okay, great. We keep that up. You made a great job.
Thank you, sir.
Senator House and the audience would like to address the city council at this time. Okay, I'm in closed public hearing. We're launching communications. We have done. Mayor, chairman, council initiated business. Okay, twelve, twelve eight. Reports and announcements. Okay, so since you're the one, she gets to report on another.
Oh, yeah, so I had the pleasure to go to the Americana Awards. It was really fun. I saw the mayor, Alice was there, I had a fun time talking to Karen Warren. It was really nice. We got to see Brian Gomicki, who received his award. Everybody was dressed up nicely. It was a great event. I had a great table away from everybody.
You're sounding a bit rich.
It was a great scene, but I'm sorry, bud.
By the way, Mayor, Mayor Purchin did a great job pulling out and taking the role of bringing mine up, so thank you.
I also wanted to report on the, I attended the first annual Orange County Women's Leadership Summit, which was sponsored by several entities, but notably Southern California had invited Fiona Ma down from Sacramento, and I spoke to her about possibly getting funds to help with relocation and things like that, and she definitely looked into it. Hopefully, we can have other sources of funding for numerous projects.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to items for a future meeting.
I have one.
Okay, good.
I'd like to propose a meeting where we could discuss bringing the mayor's position into line with the term limits on the municipal positions, and this would be for the future women that view at all. It would make all five positions in the city under the same term limits. It would have to be, we'd have to vote on it, and we'd have to go to the vote of the public on in November of 2024, because we have plenty of time to talk about it, and it seems like it would be the right thing to do, let the voters decide, and if they decide no, that's fine, if they decide yes, that's fine.
It's been wondering right now.
He wants term limits on the mayor's position.
For the anti-civil public.
We'd vote on it here to send it to the voting public.
Oh, why would you do that? Why don't we send it for the public, and we deal away with these districts at the same time, and we do a general election?
Why don't you talk about that all?
I mean, it's ridiculous for us to have a city council person represent nine streets. I mean, it's better than, I mean, it's better to have a field of candidates citywide for these high spots.
So we can't, I don't think we can do that, David. We won't get, we won't bring in the.
Actually, we can do that.
Mr. Mayor, Council, fortunately, since it's not an agenda item, we can't describe it in detail. We can put it down.
I'm discussing who just started.
So we can do, Mr. Taylor, your item as position, and just to be sure we're going to add to that.
Sure, good on that. Okay, I'd like to agendaize feasibility of moratorium on vendors' street movements. Was it clear what was going on?
Mayor Chopper, I got that.
Okay, great. Anybody else? Anything for a future space session? Twelve eight, that's you.
Yeah, a couple meetings ago, I brought up, if you look at Stanton Park over here, that's Southern California Edison land, and they allow different people to rent the land, and so we've had a park there for years and years and years, and we've really utilized that quite well. There is more Edison land on the far side of Dale, and it's available, and I thought we should grab it. The rent is minimal. I think we should grab that land and develop it when we can, because that area of Stanton has no parks, and Stanton's already right under where we should be for parks to begin with. So I think it's minimal expense, we can take it as it comes as far as what we do to develop it, but I think it's a good thing to Stanton, so I'd like to direct staff to look into it further and see if we can nail down a rental lease with Southern California.
It goes in an angle. Stop. I'm trying, I'm trying to understand, so.
Can you get onto your power plant?
No, this is going again. Sorry, I can't get online.
It's right there on the, it's our best picket worth.
Eighty-one hundred bucks. Yeah, well, the area that's available is next to Dale.
Just one of Rachel.
Yeah.
Are you talking about the easement, how to get someone to Dale, please?
Thousand and seven on Dale going south.
Okay, what about that, that big orange property between Roanoke and Roanoke and Teller?
It's in that area, yeah. Yeah, that's the big giant, I'm sure, that we tried to do before.
Yeah, the problem is, is that, is that nobody from Edison's would take the place of course, and so I'm not really able to. So what am I? Well, you know, the thing is, is that they had such a changeover in their managerial positions, so I believe.
So it's just, I mean, they're not totally.
Yeah, but. Just because I think.
Well, council gets those directions, and I will start with yours, I'm trying.
Okay, is everybody okay with that? I am.
All favor.
Yes.
Any votes? Step one, four votes of research.
Okay, Chris, test is, are you sitting in the kitchen right now?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, we still have a few more items before we see a day before.
All right, okay, well, let's see if we can come forward back. Do you have any questions?
Oh, no, item twelve eight.
Oh, item twelve eight.
We have two more city council initiatives.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
No worries. So last meeting, I agendized a proclamation to support Iranian American community here in Stanton, and as well as to condemn the government or the regime in Iran. We all got an email not too long ago, I'm sure everybody saw it. Unfortunately, I can't pull it up right now because the internet's down, but basically, like a big overview is that Iran has been cracking down a lot on protests. This all started when there was a twenty-two-year-old woman who was shot because she was wearing her hijab incorrectly. Since then, there's been many women protesting for more rights. From what I understand, Iran has a history of a rich, a rich history of women leadership, so this is kind of like a, like a resurgence of these battles and.
I think it's a great idea. Really, we support you, Grant, really support, we add something to the A and M people, so forget on.
Okay, so you're just providing a copy of that, and then you all on the phone, okay?
All on favor?
Yeah.
Any votes?
Okay, go on, Purchin.
All right, so I also initiated another item, which is parking. I know it's very, very controversial here in the city. If there is one thing that everybody was united on about those campaigns during this election cycle, was that something has to be done about this parking system. So I would appreciate it if, what's it called, council, our city manager and our city attorney could compile some, some data around the permit parking system, and from what I understand, it will be a multi, a multi-day discussion, because there's so much requests to this parking system.
Okay, just question. What aspect of the parking deal changed?
Well, so I don't have the sensitivity of the data right now to make a, you know, concrete decision, but I think it's worth it, I'd be taking a look. One of the things that a lot of my constituents told me is that the parking permit has not been enforced. I'm not, it might be, you know, just talk around, you know, but I think it's worth it, I'd be taking a look.
Of course, there's issue of.
Seems like.
Parking has changed, you remember it, Sacramento kind of took it over, we had to kind of adapt.
I think they were saying we couldn't distinguish between multifamily places and single families. And I thought it was.
And it was presented, Kamala Harris did that to us on our way out. But the good thing that we did was we modeled our parking program. After Anaheim, we did extensive studies and surveys and everything else, we modeled ours after theirs. But what we did is the parking permit, Anaheim's is per car, so if you have a blue Chevy, that permit stays with that blue Chevy, whereas Stanton, we had it to where you could put it on your blue Chevy, you could put it on your Pontiac, you could move it around, and we were five dollars a month cheaper than him. So we tried.
That's, the thing with parking permit, that I have to explain a lot of residents when they have to deal with that issue, is it's voted in by the residents. We don't force anyone to do permit parking. They have, as a community, choose and vote on it, and so they can, in the same way, choose to eliminate it. So that's the residents, and they're completely empowered to do that. If they decide, the vast majority of us hate parking permit parking, then they can vote, gather together, vote, and say, we'll get rid of it. So it's really not up to us to decide who gets parking and who doesn't get permit parking. It's really the residents, but maybe they're not clear about the process, and they feel like it's imposed. I wonder if, I don't know if our city website explained that process clearly, but maybe it's a, maybe a public, what is it? A public service education needed, yeah, or education.
Maybe the education.
Yeah, yeah.
And this way that the, and I recall the way the parking permit system was designed, it was specific to a particular neighborhood, and we actually targeted the zones of that neighborhood. In order to take place in a residential area, it had to be in a particular area, and it was only voted on by people in that area. And so we really took it out of our hands. We gave the program and made it available to meet the needs of every residential community, and the ones that easily got it, the ones that didn't want it, they get it. And so, to be honest with you, I think it's just a matter, if you're having trouble, if you're having trouble with enforcement, that has absolutely nothing to do with the permit. It has nothing to do with our program, but it has to do with the ability for our toll enforcement to, to enforce. And the reason it's been really bad is because of COVID and because of transcending upon problems without other areas in the city, dealing with all of those issues to where it really drained our staff time. Now, if we get back to some kind of normalcy, I do hope that we'll be able to do better with our parking enforcement, but I'm gonna tell you right now, the people that want it, they're not gonna give it up, and the people that want and don't want it, don't, and I don't want it. So, I mean, it's, that's where it's always been. So I don't think we have to spend a couple of days kind of doing, but I think, I think if we refine it to what your concerns are, it will go a lot smoother.
When was the last time that we did a change or looked at the parking system? Are you?
It was when we had the state ban due to the law. Pushed down to us, we then had a lot of限制, such as the permission to allow the inner housing that we've banned and reported.
So the state made this change, and we had to conform the state regulations, and then we revamped the whole thing. We actually came up with a better permit, and we came up with a better process. We also did an outreach to the community about how to get it. We had meetings on it, forums, and we actually had, we used to have our neighborhood meeting rates where we discussed and explained to them how they can get a parking permit, and how they can keep it, or how they can get rid of the parking too. So we did, we spent a lot of time on that thing.
I may ask, is there any data regarding how aggressively we are doing parking enforcement in the parking permit areas, and if there, perhaps we need to increase staffing so that the program is enforced properly?
Thank you. Related to the data as far as enforcement, in our last completed fiscal year, we actually exceeded a projection in that area by over a hundred thousand dollars. Last week, we did a very early warning operation where we issued over sixty citations. Last week, we did a, a very early morning operation where we issued over sixty citations in one day. It, it is being enforced, obviously, we can attest to every time someone slows down or parks in a permanent area without a permit they're getting to get, but it is being, uh, robustly enforced as indicated by the, uh, the numbers there. That being said, we do receive complaints on both sides. Most of the time, we do receive complaints, it's from an individual who actually was cited and then was on crusade related to those who have not been cited. So, um, that's my personal experience with it, but we do, we do enforce that, right?
But just to clarify, the hundred thousand dollars, we don't profit off of that whatsoever, that just covers our costs.
Correct.
And also, Mr. Troy, the thing is, is that we, as far as proactive, we are more reactive. And I will tell you, that any time somebody calls the city about a parking issue, that is immediately addressed. I think that takes up a bulk of our time in most cases.
How many areas do we have?
I do not have.
There's a one area. There's a page on the one section.
Maybe ten, twelve, something?
Something like that, I thought it was twelve to fourteen.
Okay, that's a beautiful point there.
Every, um, every, so that every little neighbor could get a half a salary.
And then moving forward, moving forward, we made a staffing adjustment to take an individual that was working overnight, um, and have that code slash parking position full-time during daytime hours with a focus towards the end of their shift on specific enforcement for, um, permit, for permit.
I don't make a recommendation. Since, since we do have this program in place, and our big thing is enforcement, um, I would like to make a, a, this is a committee, uh, for Donald, but maybe one other council member to meet with our public safety department, and let's go over all that data, and then you can report back to the board council and see what we can do maybe to improve our enforcement and answer the questions that you're going to see that you may have. Is that something you would work for?
Yeah, that sounds good, and if there's any other issues, I don't know.
Is there anybody that would be delighted to serve along? Okay, you got, you got a buddy? Okay, so the action, uh, the direction the council will be before the second day, uh, Mr. Troy's, Mr. Taylor is going to take a look at the enforcement concerns, and, um, at that time also, uh, we can, uh, we can, uh, program and what we are with, and then break. All right. All in favor?
All in.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we get to go to your standing, your turn.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilwoman.
Okay. Go ahead, uh, and, uh.
Just two announcements. A reminder that we're having the FRC groundbreaking this Thursday at nine AM at the FRC, which is one eight, one, two, two, Santa Paula, and we invite anybody who's available to the area to come on out, and of course, once that renovation is complete, we'll have a very big, big kind of opening. Also wanted to remind people that we have our next top of the block scheduled for Wednesday, March twenty-second at three PM at the Lawland Harum Home Park at seven, two, seven, one, Cantala Avenue, and that will be noticed at the public meeting closer to the date.
Okay, Chris, this is your pen, so it's your chance. Anyway, we're very happy to hear from you right now.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and city staff. Uh, I'll take a minute. My name is Chris Fezziak. I am the new Division Seven Administrative Captain, assigned to Division Seven, who serves the city of Stanton here with Chief Domon. Unfortunately, he couldn't be with us tonight because he's on his way to the area to assist the response to the floods. Uh, I am pleased to provide to you tonight the Orange County Fire Authority Report, uh, for February of twenty twenty-three. For the city of Stanton, there was three hundred and twenty incidents, ten being fires, two hundred and ninety for EMS or rescues, and twenty were hazardous conditions or other calls for service. In the unincorporated areas of Orange County serviced by Engine Forty-six and Squad Forty-six, there were sixty incidents, one fire, fifty-seven EMS and rescues, and two hazardous conditions or miscellaneous calls. There was one notable incident on February eighteen. Units responded with multiple reports of smoke and fire seen at about approximately midnight, twenty-two hours, arrived on the scene at eighty-three hundred Chapman Avenue. First crews reported heavy smoke and fire from a two-story apartment building. In all, it took eighty firefighters and, to bring the fire under control, almost three alarms. Fire investigators were unable to rule out multiple causes of the fire and have narrowed it down to improperly discarded smoking items, small electrical devices, and lithium-ion batteries. In all, ten units were affected by the fire, and those units were, those, uh, citizens were offered assistance from the Red Cross. Damage was estimated at two million dollars to the structure and five hundred thousand dollars to the contents of the apartments and the residents. Our safety messages for last month, there was emphasis placed on burn safety, home escape plans, and safety in public buildings. For this month, our emphasis is on cooking safety, home heating safety, electrical safety, and household hazardous waste. As a reminder, I'd like to remind everybody that this information can be found on our website at orange ocfa.org, where you print the safety flyers in multiple languages. As far as current events going on, OCFA has sent, uh, multiple resources and overhead personnel to assist with the winter storm response, both specifically in Tulare County and our local mountains in San Bernardino County. So far, we've sent a Swiftwater team that consists of seventeen firefighters to Tulare County. We've sent a type, type six engine strike team to the San Bernardino Mountains, which consists of sixteen firefighters. In addition to that, we've also supplemented with the San Bernardino Mountains, two hand crew, uh, two hand crews with thirty-six firefighters, and additionally, we've sent two structural specialists, they're civilians, that are with our FEMA Urban Search and Rescue California Task Force Five. Additionally, I'd like to thank our council members, staff, and citizens who attended our tremendously successful open house on March fourth. We had approximately five thousand, uh, citizens and, uh, participants at that event. Couldn't be successful without the participation of our, uh, city council, staff, and citizens that we serve. Thank you for your time.
Any questions? I have a question. What do we do, I know we have a great, um, fire alarm system that we use throughout the county. What do we do with those, um, units after we remove them?
Are you specifically referring to the smoke alarms? Uh, the smoke alarms usually are discarded properly. Uh, batteries go in a recycling bin at each of the individual stations, and will be discarded in a bulk supply once the bucket's full. As far as the plastics go, it's just discarded safely.
What about the, the device itself? The device itself?
The device itself, the smoke alarm, it's just taken place in the, the recycling bin.
Okay, I, um, I'd like to maybe, any of you reach out back to me and discuss it. Uh, there's radioactive material in those, and if you take that and multiply it by the hundreds and hundreds of thousands that go to the landfill, um, it might be something that OCFA should be aware of, and that maybe we can come up with a solution for taking care of that in the future.
Absolutely, I'll report back to you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, that being said, that was excellent. Don't worry, it's, it includes all of us. That means you can come back anytime. Let's run to other business. Okay, everybody stay dry and be safe for your home.